I would like to call this meeting to order. Will you please rise and join in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Lit.
Here.
Vice Mayor Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Here, ma'am.
Councilmember Morciano. Councilmember Tinsley.
Here.
Are there any additions, deletions, or modifications this evening?
No, ma'am.
Next is announcements and presentations. As the senator hasn't arrived yet, we can move on to Gary Seipack, Deputy Director of Airports, to the podium.
Thank you very much. Gary Seipack, Deputy Director, Palm Beach County Department of Airports. Thank you for the invite tonight to come and share with you plans that you've seen in the past, but maybe not in the recent past. I know we came to the City Council back in 2015, I believe, with Bruce Pelley and some other staff to present a plan that we had and to work out an addendum to an interlocal agreement that we have with the city of Palm Beach Gardens. So what I'd like to do tonight is basically just walk through a couple of slides. Some of you may have already seen this presentation that I gave about two months ago to the North County Neighborhood Coalition. It's basically the same presentation, just going to show you some of the highlights of the project. I will tell you that this is not a done deal. This project is in the middle of an environmental assessment right now that's being handled by the FAA, the Federal Aviation Administration. There's plenty of time for public comment for your constituents to provide public comment. I'll walk through some of that and then tell you when some of that public comment can occur. I know I have a presentation. Is there... Sorry.
Sorry. Which one's you?
None of those that are up there right now.
Okay, where are you at?
There's F-45, right next to me. Yep.
You get that from there, right?
Yep. Thank you very much. All right. So just a brief agenda of some of the things that I'll touch on today. Give you a little brief history of North Palm Beach County General Aviation Airport, also known as F-45, the three-letter identifier. Give you a brief history on the interlocal agreement that the city of Palm Beach Gardens has with Palm Beach County, the original agreement that was done in 1990. Talk a little bit about F-45 construction back in the 80s and the 90s, or actually in the early 90s. Touch a little bit upon our 2008 master plan when we first started talking about the runway extension. Talk a little bit about some of the proposed extension. Show you basically what it looks like, a graphic presentation. Then move into the addendum that was to the local, interlocal agreement that was approved back in 2016. Then touch a little bit upon the environmental assessment that's ongoing and end with summary and questions. So for those of you that don't know, site selection for the North County Airport started back in 1981. I think planning started well before that. Looked at very unconstrained sites out in the western part of the county. Today, they're not so unconstrained anymore. I know there's been a lot of development that's happened around the North County Airport and continues to happen. Once the idea and the site was selected, the Department of Airports and the county started discussions with the city of Palm Beach Gardens on an interlocal agreement and some of the use restrictions that would be part of that. This is the actual original agreement that was handled there. And item number one limited the lengths of runways at North County Airport to 4,300 feet. That's what the two primary runways are today. The crosswind runway is 4,300 feet, and the south runway we have there that's paved is 4,300 feet. And there's also a shorter grass turf runway on the north side of the airport. So this is what we came back to the city of Palm Beach Gardens with, with a desire to change that after we saw the need and the desire from some of the businesses up in the north part of the county and some of the county commissioners, previous county commissioners, liked to see some additional corporate headquarters maybe up in the north part of the county. And we really started looking at what could we do at the airport to kind of enhance the facility there. And lengthening the crosswind runway was one of the primary things that we thought we could do. The changes that we intend to make or that we made in 2016 didn't affect any of the other pieces of this interlocal agreement except for item number one. Just a couple of pictures showing you what North County Airport in back in 1993, March 27th of 1993. Basically, a site was an old agricultural area, not much out there. This is what it was back on February 22nd of 1994, just prior to it opening. You can see all the new runways. The, I don't know if you can see this, but this is the runway that we are extending. This is the crosswind runway. This is the south runway. They're both 4,300 feet, and the grass strip is up here. So you'll see this is the terminal area, hangars, all hangar development here. We've developed hangars on the north side as well, which I think I have in the next photo. In a minute, I will. April 22nd, 1994 was our opening date. This was one of the last airports in the U.S. Very few airports have been open since then. So this was a proud moment for Palm Beach County to be able to open a reliever airport for Palm Beach International Airport. This is basically what Palm Beach or North County Airport looks like today. You'll see the hangars on the north side, our terminal area and large hangars in the terminal area here adjacent to the crosswind runway, apron area, and more hangars and tea hangars on that southeast corner of the airfield as well. Once again, this is the runway that we intend or we are proposing to extend up into this area. This picture shows we had taken out several wetlands in this area over the last couple of years, here, down in this area, across the south, and in here. Those wetlands were identified as a wildlife hazard attractant many years ago, and that was one of the projects that we did to fill in those wetlands. Went through the proper permitting, went through all the hoops that we went through with the FAA on getting that project approved. FDOT every couple of years comes out with an economic impact study. This is something just to share with you all that FDOT estimates that North County Airport provides approximately $45 million worth of direct impact annually to the area. Without that airport there, that direct impact would not happen. There's several businesses there, aircraft maintenance shops, training schools. People house their aircraft there. We've gotten several calls lately about people that want to be up in the North County area. The lease that we have right now expires, I believe, in 2024 with signature flight support. That will go back out on the street at some point. I believe we will have a lot of interest in running that operation there up at North County Airport. Like I said, we get calls probably every couple of weeks asking for space up there, and there's really no space, no hangar space up at that airport right now. Just another graphic showing you where North County is. North County Airport's in the center of this picture. You can see Sweet Bay Natural Area, Loxahatchee Slough, the Beeline Highway, IBIS here. This is Avenir. This is an older picture, so we don't have anything fresh. I actually added the word "Avenir" there because we don't have an aerial there yet. Palm Beach International Raceway up to the north, Pratt &amp; Whitney. So although we still look like we're in the middle of no development, development is approaching upon us. And I know we've worked, the Department of Airport has worked with the city of Palm Beach Gardens in the past to try and get some disclosures in some of the real estate stuff. And your staff, the staff at Palm Beach Gardens, has provided some of that to me. Changed, I know some of the Avenir plans were changed based on some of the comments that the Department of Airports had as well early on in that process. Like I said, back in 2008 was really the first time we looked at development there and what could we do to extend our runways? What's the need? I will tell you that we are not looking to build a runway for air carrier aircraft. That's one of the things that's in the interlocal agreement that is prohibited. That is not our desire at all. It will never become that. We are trying to accommodate this more as a reliever than the role that it's supposed to be for Palm Beach International to relieve some of that traffic from Palm Beach International. So here's what the proposed runway expansion would look like. This is an early depiction of it from a couple of years ago when we first started talking about this, based on the work that was done in the master plan. It's basically the existing runway ends in this location today, so it's actually extending it up to the northwest in that area. Once again, the existing runway is 75 feet wide by 4,300 feet long. The ultimate runway would likely be 100 feet wide by 6,000 feet long. Through this environmental process, the 6,000 feet is the maximum that we are allowed to go to based on the addendum that was done to the interlocal agreement. That may not be the final length of the runway. It may be shorter. It will not be longer than 6,000 feet. The Airport Reference Code, this is basically what we design our airports to, and it's based on the approach speed of an aircraft and the wingspan of an aircraft. The existing Airport Reference Code is a B-2 today. We would go to the ultimate C-2. That basically says that the approach speed is 91 knots or more, but less than 120 knots, and a wingspan of 49 feet, up to but not including 79 feet. The wingspan of the aircraft that we're proposing to operate there or to build this runway to, extend this runway to, doesn't change the wingspan. It just changes the approach speed. As I said, we do not anticipate significant changes to the size of aircraft expected to utilize the airport. In fact, many of the aircraft that are already operating there will benefit from this extended runway today. We don't anticipate any changes to the airspace either, or flight tracks in and out of the airport. If your constituents see aircraft today, they will likely see aircraft in the future. We don't anticipate new impacts based on overflights of aircraft. And once again, I do want to stress the bottom of this. We will not, F-45 will not become PBI. No scheduled passenger carrier service will exist at that airport. Once again, just another table showing you the B-2 and C-2, the approach speed and the wingspan of the aircraft that we're talking about. This is just a graphical representation of some of the aircraft that are based, aircraft at F-45 today and some of the respective smaller business jets that we expect at F-45 in the future. Some of these are even operating there today. And just another picture of some of the aircraft. You may see these flying over your house if you live in the vicinity of North Palm Beach County General Aviation Airport. So as I said, back in 2015, I believe it was, when we came back to the city of Palm Beach Gardens, we basically presented this same presentation to you all, talked about entering into that first addendum with the interlocal agreement to increase the crosswind runway from 4,300 feet to a maximum of 6,000 feet. Through your agreement and your approval of the interlocal agreement, you also added that the county would submit an application to the Federal Contract Tower Program for the construction and operation of the air traffic control tower once the runway was constructed. Right now, we're in the process of completing the environmental assessment under the National Environmental Policy Act guidelines. The FAA is in charge of running that project for us. We're looking at that, we're looking at the proposed runway extension in there, the construction of the air traffic control tower and other connected actions such as the relocation of our roadway that's on airport property. We had originally talked about trying to find an alternate location for the entrance to Palm Beach County or to the airport. If you know, you basically have to drive probably three or four miles north of the airport to get to the entrance and then take our roadway back down another probably two to three miles into the terminal area there. So those are the projects that are all wrapped into this EA right now. Currently, we will be having a public outreach and public workshop, as I mentioned earlier, to the city manager. This is not the last time for public outreach and public comment. That will most likely happen, I would say, I know we said late summer when we did the original North County Neighborhood Coalition presentation. I'm thinking it's going to be more of early fall. We run into some delays with FAA reviews of some of our documents and the approval of the forecast. Based on that presentation that we did to the North County Neighborhood Coalition, the folks that were on that call also asked for more transparency and more information. So what we're working on right now also is a project update summary that will be on our county airport website, and people can take that. We can provide it to the North County Neighborhood Coalition and also to the city of Palm Beach Gardens to include on your website as well. And we're always open to questions. If there's, at any time, anyone can reach me, and I'd be happy to help with any of the questions that your constituents or anyone on the City Council might have. We anticipate completion of the EA late 2021 into early 2022. And like I said, there's still a lot of work that needs to be done following the completion of the EA. We anticipate going out for a design firm to actually design the runway improvements there, which could take 12 to 16 months to complete that, and then enter into a construction contract with a firm to actually do the, construct the improvements. I will tell you too that the county has already submitted an application for the Federal Contract Tower Program. April of last year was when we pulled all the paperwork together, prepared the benefit cost analysis with some outside consultants. Right now, based on what we've heard from the outside consultants that do this on a regular basis with airports throughout the country, we have a very good shot of being accepted into that program. We have not heard back yet. There's been a delay once again in review of forecasts that were used in some of these benefit cost analysis. However, it seems that, what I've heard in the last two weeks was that the FAA is starting to move on some of these projects and move on the application. So we're anticipating something back from them, hopefully in the next 30 to 60 days. As part of the environmental assessment, these are all the different things that we will be looking at, all the different resource categories, from air quality to noise to flood plains to fish, wildlife, and plants. I've been getting calls and talking to folks from EPA and Florida Fish and Wildlife over the last couple of days. They received the same letter that the city council, or the city manager, I believe, received from our consultants stating that we were doing this project and kind of having some of this early coordination. So we are coordinating with them as well. A lot of the comments that we're getting back now are they want to wait until we get the draft EA completed, and then they'll provide their formal comments to us. But these are all the things that we're looking at. This is typical of an environmental assessment and all the different aspects you look at. And with that, I'll open it up to any questions you might have.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have one or two maybe questions. One is, were you contemplating constructing the tower in conjunction with the extension of the runway?
We are. It's rolled into, right now, all of the impacts for the construction of the tower are being looked at as part of the environmental assessment as well.
Okay. And then, maybe this is a max question, but does the Avenir docs include like a, some sort of a disclosure about the extension proposal?
It doesn't have a disclosure about the extension proposal, but their documents do have, make reference to the fact that there is a runway over to their northeast, that there's an airport. We did, it did require that in their documents.
Got it. Yes.
And as I recall, in the early years, former airport director Bruce Pelley had sent correspondence to Avenir alerting them of the runway patterns that existed and that in the future, runway patterns may change. So I know that early on in the process, the year, I don't remember, but I do recall that letter.
Right, I remember discussions way back. That's why I asked the question. I just don't remember what happened. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Those are my questions. Thank you.
The plans for the runway expansion, though, at this time, don't indicate a change in direction from where it is now.
Correct. The runway is being extended in the same direction. We're not turning runways or anything. The only thing in our proposed action in, as part of the environmental assessment, we may move the center line approximately 100 or 150 feet because we need the separation to gain those, the distances between the taxiway and the runway at the airport today.
So in summary, there are not supposed to be larger planes coming in, but the newer technology of the new planes makes them want to fly faster, and they need the longer runway to...
Correct. Or right now, there may be some limitations on how many people they can carry in the aircraft, how much gas they can carry, which dictates how far they can go. They may be able to go much farther than they can today with that additional 1,400 feet.
Okay. Carl?
So Gary, the airport in general is going to stay private, not commercial?
Correct.
Okay. Because I just brought that up, and assuming Amazon is still going into Jupiter, so Amazon would be approaching the airport going, it's a perfect place to run their stuff around if they needed to get a commercial.
Yeah, we have not talked about aviation-related issues.
I don't think the community would want that.
No, no.
So it'll stay private?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I'll say it. Thank you very much.
We also have our, you were next on my list, my dear.
Sit in a car.
But we do have our District 1 County Commissioner with us today, Maria Marino.
Thank you very much. Hello. Boy, it's fun sitting on this side of the room. But Maria Marino, I live at 3 Carrick Road, County Commissioner, and I just wanted to say that as your representative and also working with the airports, please know that we are always interested in your comments. And one of the things that Gary didn't say was, the smaller airplanes, the older airplanes make a whole lot more noise than the airplanes that are going to come in now. So anything that my office can do to help and to aid and guide, Ron's got a smile on his face, so. Aren't you going on vacation one of these days? Aren't you going on vacation soon? But I'm here to help. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to call Senator Bobby Powell to the podium.
Hello, everybody. Hello, Bobby. How are y'all?
This is you, right?
That is me. That is me. Thank you very kindly.
First, I want to just say congratulations and hello, Mayor Lit. Good to see you. Vice Mayor Reed. Good to see you back. Councilwoman Tinsley. Good to see you. Councilmember Carl Woods and Ms. Ferris, City Manager. And also, good to see you, City Attorney, Ms. Lohman. Glad to be before y'all today. Just, you know, really excited to be here. Once again, back out of session, want to do a real quick legislative update. Good to see everybody from the city of Palm Beach Gardens. Of course, I went to Palm Beach Gardens High School, so it was right down the street. Of course, this is our view from Tallahassee. As you can see, I'm wearing a mask in this particular photo because this year in Tallahassee, we were in the middle of the pandemic. And in the pandemic, we did not have the opportunity to invite people from the public inside of the Capitol. If you wanted to come and give us public input, you had to do it from the convention center, which was right down the street. And this was just signifying what session was for us this year. Very, very different. We did a lot of Zoom calls and Zoom meetings, but the ability to not interact with people face-to-face probably caused some of the things that happened with regard to local preemptions. Now, I will tell you this before we get started. Some of my colleagues have said that it was a great session. I'm a planner, urban planner, and that's one of the reasons I was a little bit tardy today. I was finishing some projects with Urban Design Studio. But as an urban planner who is AICP certified, the number one goal of a planner is to serve the public interest, which I believe is also the number one goal of an elected official or a public official, which is to serve the public interest. And the only way you can do that is by getting input from the public. We are not the be-all, end-all, and without having that input, I believe, this year was a significantly different session. I don't think it was the best session, contrary to what others may say. I think it was one of the most difficult sessions that we've had because the public was shut out of the process, and that should never happen. But I understand we were in the middle of a pandemic and we had to do what we had to do. But I do know that there were some impacts because the public was not there. Now, of course, these are all of the municipalities that I have the opportunity to represent. In total, it's about 500,000 people, the northern parts of Palm Beach County. In that includes the city of Palm Beach Gardens, which is, of course, I believe from my understanding, one of the cities in Palm Beach County with the largest land masses. Although West Palm Beach may be the capital city, Palm Beach Gardens may be the biggest city. So it's glad to be back here in Palm Beach Gardens to run over the legislative update with you all. Of course, we have 40 senators in the legislature and 120 members of the House. My colleague here in the House is Representative Rick Roth. Sometimes him and I can come up here and kind of tag-team this. You get to duel two sides of the same coin. But he's not here with us today. 16 Democrats in the Senate, 24 Republicans, and we have the ability to pass or file, not pass, file unlimited bills. In the House, they've moved it up to being able to file seven bills. They used to be able to only file six. I have moved up into some leadership roles, of course. Being in my ninth year as a legislator, I am the current chairman of the Florida Legislative Black Caucus, as well as the Senate Democratic Leader Pro Tem. With my other responsibilities of working for urban design, managing my legislative office, and being a full-time husband and daddy, it keeps me quite busy. The committees I serve on, as you can see in this picture, I've got my hand on my head. One of the reasons we want to emphasize this is because the committees that I get a chance to serve on this year are appropriations, the Full Appropriations Committee, and the Rules Committee. Nearly every single bill that goes to the floor of the chamber of the Senate goes through the Rules Committee or the Appropriations Committee. Now, mind you, that this is the legislature, and there are funny things and special things that do happen sometimes, and a bill can end up on the floor, not very often, but it has happened at least twice this year that didn't go to this committee, appropriations or rules. I also serve on Commerce and Tourism, which is big with regard to infrastructure. We just had a presentation with regard to the airport here in Palm Beach County and economic impact. Commerce and Tourism is the committee that deals directly with our economic impacts, of course. Here in Palm Beach County, we have the port. I serve on Community Affairs, that deals directly with our local governments. All of the bills that we saw with regard to preemption of local governments came through Community Affairs. Yes, I voted against every last one of them. And then I serve on Criminal Justice and the Alternating Joint Chair on the Office of Public Counsel. Some of the major session issues that you're still hearing about right now, one of the number one bills we're hearing about today include combating public disorder, which is HB 1. And right now, you're hearing about the misappropriation or the misapplication of that particular piece of legislation because it deals with protests. Senate Bill 90, which is election administration, police reform, which is HB 751. That was a priority of the caucus, of the Legislative Black Caucus, but also the Democratic Caucus and the Republican Caucus working with law enforcement to come up with some different characteristics that we could put into a police reform bill that everyone would be happy with and we thought were necessary for change. Senate Bill 54 was big. That dealt with motor vehicle insurance. It was anti-Pip or getting rid of the Pip bill. However, the governor did veto that. And then the local government preemptions. These are just a few of them that passed. We saw code enforcement. You know, you can't do anonymous code enforcement. Fuel retailers, preemption of occupational licenses to the state, and impact fees. How major is that for local governments? That is one that, of course, the legal cities has talked about. Hopefully, will continue to talk about that because when you get rid of the idea that you cannot apply impact fees the way they used to be applied, those fees will, obviously, if you need to do road construction or infrastructure, it's going to fall onto your residence in some way. The anti-protest legislation, it creates a few things. The crime of mob intimidation. That prohibits a mob, which is now designated in this particular legislation as three people who are together to forcefully compel or attempt to compel another person against what their own views are. So this is broad language that can be interpreted in many ways. This was codified in law this year. Require the person who was arrested for specified offenses related to a riot, meaning that if they're protesting, and we've defined this as a riot now because anything that has become violent or quoted as violent, they can be arrested and held overnight, or at least until first appearance. It creates additional civil penalties for people who are blocking roads. Now, this was a change because originally, the way the language was written would allow people who were blocking roads to be run over, and there would be no ramifications. However, the legislature, in its infinite wisdom and research, found that it was unconstitutional to run people over. So we changed the legislation. And then it, for you all as municipalities, you would waive the sovereign immunity if you breached the statutory duty to allow law enforcement to respond lawfully to an assembly. Senate Bill 90, voter restriction legislation. This mainly dealt with an idea that we're seeing happen all over the nation. But more importantly, for us here in Palm Beach County, our supervisor of elections did not push for this legislation, and it would really, one of the biggest things that would do is get rid of drop boxes. So for me, I go to Tallahassee, and I'm in Tallahassee during local elections. The opposition will say, well, there's always early voting. I don't know about in Palm Beach Gardens, but I know recently in West Palm Beach, and when I used to live in Riviera Beach, for municipal elections, there was no early voting. And I vote in every election. So if you're in Tallahassee, like I am during March, and you're only here on a weekend, you may not have the opportunity to get to a poll. And if you've requested a vote by mail, remember, Election Day is the only day you can vote, and you may not have the time to drop your absentee ballot or vote by mail ballot in the box. What I did before March 9th is I dropped my ballot in the supervisor of elections office right before I jumped on a plane. That will no longer be available to us due to this legislation. However, it is in the court, so we'll see what happens. One of the things that's mentioned here is we talked about fraud. We talked about all these things. We debated. Anyone who has a vote by mail ballot who is not an immediate family member as a child or parent, mother, father, grandparent, could be charged with a crime, could be a felony, and it does not bring it into cousins or aunts if somebody lives in your house who may be a friend. You know, some of us live with family members who are not necessarily aunts, I mean, mother and father. They could be charged with a crime. But we did not deal with sham candidates. That's been an issue that has happened here in the state of Florida, definitely right now in Miami, to one former legislator and one candidate who registered as a no-party affiliate at the time were arrested and they're being charged with crimes. Police reform. This is one of the bright spots that we had. It implements minimum standards for law enforcement officers and correctional officers, limits chokeholds. There's a duty to... There's a duty to interfere, and disclosures on employment applications if a law enforcement officer goes from agency to agency. Independent investigations of data that's collected on use of force incidents, not done by the internal agency. And also, we raised the minimum age of arrest. Right now, there's no, well, there wasn't a minimum age of arrest. And because of a girl whose name is Kaia Roll, who was six years old, a young girl, six years old, was arrested, we've raised the minimum age of arrest to seven years old. My bill would have moved it to 10, but nonetheless, seven is better than six and better than five, four, three, but we still need to work on that. And then there's mental illness training for law enforcement officers, which was originally one of my bills, which allows our law enforcement officers to take mental illness training to identify people who have mental illness as a part of their CLEs, their continued learning hours. I just believe that it gives people an opportunity to identify someone who is suffering from a mental health crisis. And right now, we went through a pandemic. We saw a lot of things happening. A lot of people dealt with the pandemic in different ways, and it's really time that we in the state of Florida start really paying attention to mental health and mental illness. Florida is at the bottom in terms of funding for mental health, and it's really, really time that we put some resources where they need to be. Motor vehicle insurance, no fault. I don't know if we really need to go through this. We would have got rid of Pip and went to a system of mandatory bodily injury. It was vetoed by the governor. And then here are your local preemptions. Code enforcement. In a nutshell, Senate Bill 60 prohibits, has permits anonymous complaints only if there's a threat of imminent destruction of natural resources or to health, welfare, and safety. Short of this threshold, a person must affix his or her name to a code enforcement complaint. This can be problematic because if you want to keep your municipalities, you know, beautiful, people could be afraid to report their neighbor or their, maybe even a friend, whose code violations are really up there because of fear of retaliation. Fuel retailers. Senate Bill 893. It prohibits local governments from adopting laws or policies which prohibit the citing, development, or redevelopment of a fuel retailer or related transportation infrastructure necessary to provide fuel to a retailer throughout the local government's jurisdiction. So in a nutshell, Palm Beach Gardens or no other municipality can ban gas stations. Preemption of local, I'm sorry, preemption of occupational licenses prohibits the local governments from requiring a license for a person whose job does not substantially correspond to that of a contractor or a journeyman type license by the Construction Industry Licensing Board within the Department of the Business and, of DBPR, Business and Professional Regulations. This is important because we've got a lot of people who are saying they're painters and whatever other things they may claim to be, handyman, but without having a proper license from the local municipality meeting certain standards, you could really end up with people who don't know what they're doing and could cost you a lot of money in the future because now that's not on the jurisdiction, it's on to the state. And then impact fees, we talked about this. It provides specific limitations on the amount a local government may increase impact fees. The limitations operate retroactively to January 1st, 2021. Now, mind you, when the Senator was pushing this legislation, we also changed impact fees last session, which we haven't even seen how that worked because we were in the middle of a pandemic, but we came back again and messed with impact fees from municipalities. So just be cognizant of what's happening in Tallahassee, and if not, I'll come back and tell you. My legislation, unemployment compensation, some of that moved. We had a big problem with that. My staff were really diligently on unemployment during the pandemic. There were so many people who had never been unemployed before, who had to make claims and could not, to this day, some people still have not got the first check or first allotment from unemployment. Electronic legal documents, we changed the way we do online notarization, and there was some cleanup language that I pushed through. Minimum age of arrest, I wanted to go to 10. It was in a bill for seven. Waivers of fees for affordable housing construction, that would have gave the local governments an opportunity to deal with affordable housing in your own way in order to be able to waive some fees to put money there for affordable housing. That did not move. Instead, we passed a growth management bill that did the opposite. Mental illness training for law enforcement officers was rolled into the House Bill 7051, and then background screening, which is banning the box. Budget highlights, we had a $101.5 billion budget this year. Clearly, the largest budget in the state's history. Unfortunately, with the largest budget in the state's history, we had an appropriation request for $300,000, $300,000 only, for Palm Beach Gardens stormwater maintenance, and that did not make it into the budget. However, not to be mistaken, our good friend Matt Forrest with Ballot Partners worked diligently to try to make sure that we got that funding in the budget, and we'll come back at it again next year. And hopefully, Mayor and Council, we will request a lot more in terms of funding because when they brought in the additional, almost $10 billion of federal government money, I didn't really see a need for the cuts that we did see in Palm Beach County. But because we were in the middle of a pandemic, we did not put in as many requests as we'd normally put in, and I think we lost out. Maybe we would have got a little bit more cut, but then again, we probably would have got a little bit more in that would have stayed in. Overall, last year's budget was 92.2 billion. This year's budget, 101.5 billion. The governor, as I said, cut $1.5 billion out of the budget, and we continue to work hard on your behalf. This is my staff. We've got Diane Andre J.D., Kirsty Miles Esquire, and Christopher Stubbs E.D.D. This is Team GTJD. Get the job done. All of their email addresses are right there underneath their names, and our office number is 561-650-6880. This is Team Powell. We are the Florida Senate, and I'm available for any questions, comments, or conversation. Thank you all for giving me the opportunity to once again come before you here in the city of Palm Beach Gardens.
Thank you, Senator Powell. It's always great to see you. Anybody have any questions?
No, I appreciate you taking care and making sure that we obviously have home rule here. As you know, that that's very important. And if I might even say something, but you know we're having a mobility conflict with the county, and it would really be nice, since you're somewhat involved in that, and a planner, to maybe strengthen Florida Statute 163, maybe look at strengthening the language so that municipalities such as ourself could, you know, obviously, be forward-thinking and create mobility the way we see fit.
I'm glad you brought that up. Thank you, Councilwoman Tinsley. Louis, I can't think of Louis' last name right now. Louis Rotundo has been on me about that. We've had an opportunity to sit down. He actually came down to Palm Beach County last year, right before session, and we sat down and talked about it. It's a conversation that we'll continue to have, and we'll work on it together, and hopefully, we can come up with a solution that works for everybody.
That would be great, and I look forward to that conversation.
Thank you very kindly.
And I'd like to add a request moving forward. I know there will be a lot of municipalities and League of Cities asking the state to take a look at the building requirements so that another surfside doesn't happen. Leadership and enforcement capabilities need to come from the state on this.
Thank you, thank you. I'll make sure I communicate that with my colleagues in the legislature. There has, you know, obviously been a push to not put as many restrictions or regulations in place. We've dealt with building codes at the state level before, but this has been an issue that has touched all of us, and I think it's absolutely necessary that we really pay attention to this because people's lives are at stake. So we will do that. I promise you that.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'd just like to add that I appreciate, as a professional, your position and the way that you advocate for local government. Recognize you for that. I believe you've already received some recognition for that. You're just being modest. But rest assured, we will be back next year for more money on stormwater. And we are patient, but we are persistent. We'll be back. Thank you for your help and your support.
You're welcome. Thank you, City Manager Ferris.
Thank you for the update, too.
You are more than welcome. Thank you all, and have a great night. And thank you all as well.
At this time, I'd like to call Cheryl Stewart, Human Resources Administrator, to the podium.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you, Ms. Ferris. Cheryl Stewart, Human Resources Administrator, and it is my great privilege this evening to be here to present this evening for consideration under consent. The city's group health insurance plan for council's consideration under consent. First, I'd like to welcome and recognize a special guest here with us tonight, Jolica Cruz with Florida Blue. As many of you know, we've partnered with Florida Blue since about 1998 to provide our city employees and families the very best quality healthcare services and medical insurance coverage that we could possibly do in a cost-effective manner. Jolica is the manager of retention and administrative support for South Florida here on behalf of George Apple, who is actually our strategic account executive, who's actually on vacation, celebrating his birthday today and this week. Thank you, Jolica, for all your service and for working with us and partnering with us for so many years. To talk more about Florida Blue and the proposed new contract, it is my great pleasure to introduce Lauren Ferreira, who is a senior HR journalist here with the city. She's been with the HR department for 15 years, since 2006. And not only is the city's benefits manager providing second-to-none customer service, but not only has she done that, but on a daily basis, behind the scenes, above and beyond, assist me, as well as countless employees every day, just being like family. So we cannot thank you enough. Among many achievements that Lauren has achieved over the years, she's earned several difficult and distinguished certifications, including Group Benefits Associate, which is awarded by the International Foundation of Employee Benefit Plans, and Professional in Human Resources from SHRM, as well as the Human Resource Certification Institute. Lauren, thank you for your dedication, service, and passion over the years.
Thank you.
And looking out for the very best health and well-being for everyone in our organization. So thank you. And without further delay.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Cheryl. It's my pleasure. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. As Cheryl mentioned, Lauren Ferreira from the Human Resource Department. The city's group health insurance agreement with Florida Blue is set to expire on September 30th with no option to renew. Based upon anticipated savings, the city solicited proposals to carve out the pharmacy benefits management from the group health insurance. And the pharmacy carve-out approach provides enhanced oversight, transparency, and control of the pharmacy expenses. It allows the city the ability to negotiate a better agreement by separating the pharmacy expense from the group medical expense, with the city receiving 100% of the pharmacy rebates. The city's pharmacy expense in the last fiscal year was approximately $2 million, which is about 25% of the overall health claim spend. Our employees use generic medications about 84% of the time. However, you'll see that 86% of the pharmacy cost is associated with the specialty and brand-name medications. The high cost associated with a specialty medication is one of the major drivers in the continued cost increase. With projected savings data provided by our city's insurance consultant, proposals for group medical and pharmacy benefits management were solicited. We received proposals from Aetna, Humana, United Healthcare, and Florida Blue for both the medical and the pharmacy benefits management. We also received proposals from four pharmacy benefit management companies just for the pharmacy services alone. Taking into account the size of the carrier's network, their administrative fees, their overall network discounts, and the pharmacy rebates, along with not disrupting the provider network or the plan design, the selection committee concurred that Florida Blue continues to offer the city the very best option, both medically and financially. This negotiation to Florida Blue began in March with an award recommendation in April, and as you can see here, the administrative fees for the three-year agreement are approximately $1,145,000. So to provide some background, as Cheryl mentioned, Florida Blue has partnered with the city for group medical coverage since 1998. In fact, Florida Blue is the leader in the Florida marketplace, providing quality health services and solutions to more than 70% of government employees. They currently provide administrative services and claims processing services, which are paid from the city's self-insurance fund. As you can see, they offer, it's broadest access to care, which is reflected here in the in-network utilization by our members, so it's almost 93%. With their deep discounts, the city has received $5.6 million, or saved $5.6 million in the last plan year alone, either a cost avoidance or a savings. The agreement that we have going forward will continue to offer $50,000 in annual wellness funds, which is used to keep healthy members healthy, to prevent chronic conditions, and to encourage healthy behaviors. The city has received $300,000 in wellness funds from Florida Blue. Just as a little sidebar, I also wanted to point out that our employees continue to surpass Florida Blue's benchmark for cancer screenings. So I feel that's, you know, very important as well. As far as the pharmacy savings, the city has realized $678,000 in savings in the last plan year by employing Florida Blue's utilization management programs, and also by utilizing safer prescription alternatives that not only controls the cost, but provides for the best possible health outcomes. The rebates that we've received from Florida Blue for fiscal year 2017 through 2020 were approximately $548,000, and we are projected to receive roughly $550,000 in the upcoming fiscal year by carving out the pharmacy expense with the projected pharmacy cost avoidance of nearly $2 million over the three-year agreement. So in summary, the city has realized and enjoyed a longstanding relationship with Florida Blue, as our goal is to continue to provide city employees with the very best healthcare while focusing on cost savings initiatives that deliver quality access and superior services. With that, I'm open for any questions.
I just want to say thank you, Lauren. Every time I've had the opportunity to speak with you, you've made big words, very clear about anything I'm having concerns with for healthcare. It's been wonderful and really impressive, the system that the city has set up. You work really hard, and it shows. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Have there been any changes to the plans with a new plan coming through?
No, there's no change to the plan design whatsoever, other than the city receiving, you know, 100% of the pharmacy rebates. There's no plan to sign change.
Great, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you. Next, we have comments from the public. I do not have any comment cards for items not on the agenda, so we'll move on to the city manager's report. Ron?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I have a few items to bring to your attention this evening. First off, I told you in the very beginning of last year, that I would bring to you occasionally some updates on our capital improvement projects. And here tonight, I've asked David Reyes, our Community Services Administrator, administrator, as well as our Director of Emergency Management, to give you a little update on some specific CIPs. And he's accompanied by his partner there, Todd Engel, our city engineer.
Good evening, Council. For the record, David Reyes, Community Services Administrator, and I brought reinforcement with me today for my presentation. So yes, I will provide you with a presentation, an update on our capital projects. Currently, we have 47 active projects. You see those listed in front of you. We are not going to go over every other project tonight. We are only going to try to update you on the larger projects. So for the first project, I asked our city engineer, Todd Engel, to provide you with the update.
So our first project tonight is Campus Drive, which is our first mobility project that we're embarking on, of a long list of mobility projects that we have going on. So what we're going to do with Campus Drive, we're at the intersection of Campus Drive and Fairchild, we're installing a roundabout. We're also going to add additional capacity on the turn lane of the Approach of PGA to help some stacking issues that we've been having at the Approach of PGA. We're going to add additional sidewalks. We're going to add an additional sidewalk on the west side that doesn't exist today that goes from RCA all the way to PGA, and we're going to remove the old five- and six-foot sidewalk on the east of the west side and change that to a 12-foot sidewalk. So we're going to start next week, July 23rd, we're going to close down Campus Drive completely. We're going to close it down for two weeks. We're going to build that roundabout in its entirety, stripe it, and get it open and ready for the beginning of school for Palm Beach State. So again, that closure will start the 23rd, and it'll run through August 6th. The school starts on the 15th, so we have plenty of time. We've also got all the MOT in place and ready to go for that construction. The roundabout we're going to install is very similar to the ones you see on Shady Lakes and 117th, with the exception of they're a bit larger because we do have Fire Station Two there, and allow for the fire trucks to pass through, as well as some deliveries to the campus that need to be done. There'll be additional landscaping as well. On Campus Drive, we are going to, again, increase the stacking. We have a pinch point here, the left-hand turns on the PGA calls some backup, so the through movements and the right-hand movements will be able to go through. This is about a 300-foot lane that we're putting in here, so it's going to add a lot of stacking. And again, we're going to have a seven-foot sidewalk on the east side of the road that does not exist today, and we'll remove entirely the entire sidewalk on the west side and replace it with a 12-foot multi-use path. And again, there'll be some street lighting and some landscaping and some other stuff, along with the Campus Drive improvements. Any questions on Campus Drive?
Oh, wait. I just, I want to thank you for, I know we were talking earlier today about making sure that the students at Palm Beach State College have access to the bus stops, that Palm Trans running as well. So by allowing mobility like this, I'm really hopeful that getting them off the bus and into the campus will go even more smoothly than before, and the fact that you'll do it in two weeks, it's pretty exciting.
Just around.
Just the roundabout. Just the roundabout, but obviously, the bikes and the shared use path is going to make a huge difference for those students getting off and on buses and going to the library or to the IC Theater and back and forth. It's really nice to see it happening.
I know the students and the administration at Palm Beach State were very happy the way the city participated with them on coming to a way to fix the problem over there that they were having.
They've been great to deal with, and they've also brought in some of their students to help with the fix that know what the problems are, so that was great to deal with. And then, I have to teach a couple of classes, not necessarily to go present some things on how the construction's going. So there is some give back to that.
And we know that you can do it, because you had 1/17th as a practice doing things quickly when we did that project a long time ago, so...
That was 57 days.
Yeah, practice makes perfect.
Our next project is garden parks improvement, and project scope includes the installation of an ADA playground unit, installation of a bank shot basketball courts, and installing shade structure over the bleachers for the showcase field. All those three elements are scheduled to be completed by November 2021, and at that point, that whole project will be completed. Another project, which is also for your consideration tonight on the consent agenda, is our aquatic complex renovation project. This project consists on the demolition of the existing main pool, which was built back in 1982, and replaced with the construction of a new pool. The new pool amenities will include a beach entry for ADA accessibility, a learn-to-swim and recreation swim area, sun shelf area, 16-foot slide, a five-lane lap pool, multipurpose area, dive well, and rock walls. We expect to start construction the end of August, with completion date of March of 2022. In conjunction with this project, another project is the Aquatic Center Building. This project includes demolition of two existing buildings, a 1,400-square-foot restroom building and pool entry building, and 300-square-foot small building lifeguard stand, both to be replaced with a 6,200-square-foot aquatic center building. The amenities for this building include an aquatic staff and lifeguard work area, storage room, supervisor's office, a first aid room, cover patio, showers, locker room with showers, a family restroom, and an entrance gate that will allow access into the pool directly from the parking. This project is scheduled for contract award on September 2021 and completion date September of 2022. We want to try to work both projects at the same time, so it'll minimize impact on the operation of the rec center. And the last project that I want to update you tonight is the construction of the 18-hole Part III golf course and the Sand Hill Crane access road. This project is comprised of three major components. There's actually two projects together, but there's three components to this whole project, so I'm going to talk about all three at the same time. One of them is the construction of a Nicholas Design Part III 18-hole golf course, which you're seeing here. The extension of the Sand Hill Crane access road, this will connect the existing access road and the golf course into the Avenir Community, and a construction of a new clubhouse to service this golf course. All three to be constructed at the same time. If you remember, this council approved funding for this project early this year, January this year, the funding was approved, and staff told you that we wanted to build this in less than two years, so we knew that we had a challenge in our hands. This project is probably twice the size of District Park, but we did District Park in 13 months, and we did 1/17 in 57 days, so we're well accustomed to big challenges and tight deadlines, so we figured if we'd done it before, why not do it again? So that was our challenge, and immediately after this council approved the funding, staff went in and started working on this project and started moving all the pieces to make sure that we stay on track. So I'm very happy to announce today that the site already been cleared, and construction is actually on the way. Design of the golf course, which you're seeing here, this is the final design, the golf course has already been designed, completed. The Sand Hill Crane Drive Road is already going on the construction, so we already starting to build in this road. Right now, we're just awaiting for the final permit from South Florida Water Management District, so once we get that permit, everything is ready, contractor's on site, we start digging the lakes, we start building this golf course. So as of today, we are on track for this. As for the clubhouse, this is a 14,400-square-foot building equipped with two bars, a deli, a pro shop, employee offices, workstation, multipurpose room, and a two-story driving range with 18 bays. I'm happy to announce too, that the design for the clubhouse has already been completed. In fact, this project is already out to bid, and we expect a bid still within the next two weeks. So you're talking about designing an entire facility of this size in less than six months, so that's how fast we've been working on this. So right now, our schedule is to start construction of this clubhouse on August of 2021, and our completion date for all three projects is November of 2022. So that is our plan for this, and I have to say, just a project of this magnitude, to do it in this time, and to be where we are today, with this project cannot happen without that team of department that is up there, and the leadership of Mr. Ferris to help us, guide us through this whole process, it would never be possible. This is a large, large project. Even private contractors will tell you, this is not something that you build this fast. We are able to do it. The minute you council approved the funding, staff made this a priority, and like I said, in four months, we have both the golf course design, the building design, and we're on the construction. So I cannot say enough about the team, our legal department, they're just constantly just dropping everything they're doing, making sure that we are following all the right procedures to stay, not doing the right thing, but making sure that we on track. So I could not say enough about thanks to all the departments for all the hard work, and we're really proud where we are, and we're looking forward to complete this project. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, statements?
I don't have a question, it's just more of a comment for the residents, that one of the great things, which Palm Beach Gardens is also pretty humble, is if you go onto the Palm Beach Gardens website at PBGFL, all of these are listed. So if any residents curious about any of the current projects, future projects, all of it's right there, that they can just go online and see it. So thank you for keeping that up to date.
Thank you.
Council is proud of the team as well, and something our residents should be proud of too, it's what makes our city the great city that it is. It's you and the rest of the team.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. The other, a couple of other things I'd like to bring to your attention, I sent you an email earlier this week, I believe, to let you know that we've been requested to send personnel down to the Surfside tragedy of the condo destruction there. We had sent, deployed 16 different personnel to the site. There were six different deployments between July 5 and July 10. They were 12-hour-long deployments. I understand they were difficult and stressful, but our personnel performed admirably. We're pleased to be able to help relieve some of, and assist, you know, some of the personnel that have been there so long. So we're no longer involved in that at this point, we've been relieved, but we were very happy to be able to give that type of assistance to that horrible tragedy. As a outcome of that, there have obviously been a lot of discussions about building safety and inspections. And of course, now, there is certainly a heightened awareness and proactivity in building inspections all over the areas, all over the counties, particularly the coastal areas. While there's no mandatory inspection program right now in Palm Beach County, the county building officials, all over the county, city and county officials, as well as fire marshals, have been communicating and trying to come up with some ideas for solutions. You can see pictures of our personnel that participated down there. And I think, from what I can glean from those meetings and talking with our building official, Scott Danyelski, there seems to be no one-size-fits-all, and it's going to be a very complicated issue to deal with. We also think that probably going to need some standard guidance from the legislature this year, and we would hope to be able to lobby them to help provide that. However, again, one-size-doesn't-fit-all, the coastal communities have different issues than the near-coastal communities versus the far inland communities, but just to be a little bit proactive on it, and talking with Scott Danyelski, what we did is we issued letters, I sent you copies of the letters, to the property owners, and encouraged them to do the structural electrical inspections and correct any deficiency. We identified 24 properties within the city, that's buildings with four stories or more, and we have notified the owners of those properties, and we asked them to do these things, and send us copies, and let us know how they're doing that. In the meantime, we will advocate at the state level with our lobbyists to try to help come up with some ideas that may be right for this city, anyway. So I just thought I would bring you up to date on that. Next, you know, we're about 45 days into the hurricane season. With that, our city employees, as always, stands ready, they stand ready to protect and serve during the worst of times and the best of times. So I've asked David Reyes, who we have already introduced, and a woman who needs no introduction, Candace Temple, our Public Media Relations Director, and they have something special for you here tonight.
I'm just going to change my hat for a second. As you remember, last month, I gave you all an update on our pre-storm activities, and we talked about everything we're doing just to make sure that we are ready, and just after that, we all know that we had a little bit of time where we thought that maybe Tropical Storm Elsa may be coming in this way where we're in the cone, so it gave us another opportunity to practice over and over again, so I'm not concerned, we definitely have plenty of practice. But tonight, we have a surprise for you, but before we get into that, I want to just to kind of give you a quick overview of how the whole process worked and the operation, so you kind of put it all together. As you know, the city has established six teams that are located through all the five different fire stations, and one team that is designated out for the western community. Right now, we utilize the golf clubhouse as a location for that team eventually, that will be Fire Station Number Six. Each team is comprised of a fire, police, public works, community services, leisure services, and building inspector. Each team has all these resources in there, so every box that you see here has all those resources. They are trained, they're designed to operate fully independent from each other, so if we lose all communication, they're still capable to go out, provide fast response, regardless of whether there's communication with the EOC or not. That's why we create this plan, which is very unique to Palm Beach Gardens, you don't see that in many other cities. In addition to those teams, we also have a support team at the Burnt Road Community Center. We have other teams set up at the Operations Center, which is a Cat Five building. Not only will have additional teams in there, but we'll also use this building to store all the critical equipment, and of course, our EOC, which is our Situation Room. But tonight, I want to bring Candace Temple, our Public Media Relations, who's going to talk to you about an upcoming campaign.
With David's help, our office has developed a campaign for hurricane preparedness that we hope will accomplish two things. Teach our residents a little about the people and equipment that we put into action when a storm strikes, and remind them that they should be preparing themselves and their families to execute a solid safety plan should a hurricane decide to visit. Tonight, I'd like to give you a preview of that video, and that we plan to roll out in the near future on all of our digital platforms. This was done in-house. Madeline in my office does the bulk all of the video editing, with me just pointing my finger where to move things. And so we produced this in-house, and our goal is to teach our residents and encourage them to give their hurricane guide one more look, and check that disaster kit one more time. When, we want them to know that the city is doing what we need to do and what is necessary to prepare, but they have to do their part as well. As you will see, we kept our message simple. but they have to do their part as well. As you will see, we kept our message simple. Okay. And a special thank you to our employees of the different emergency response teams for helping us pull this off. It was a lot of coordination, but they were great sports. They, we dodged raindrops. And as you can see, they're very talented. Thank you.
Thank you. That was great. You guys are getting good at this. Has anything changed in the, from last year's hurricane guide to this year's hurricane guide that we should be aware of?
No, we, we still have the same information. So, and all the information from all the other vendors hasn't changed.
Thank you.
When does this go on our website?
Soon. I think you'll see it within the next week. Probably next week, we'll start rolling this out. And it will be in various forms, but the same message.
We'll get a link, I assume, to that, too?
Yes, we'll send you a link.
Awesome. Thank you.
Hopefully, our residents get to see all the resources that are here during the storm. And that's what we were trying to do. You know, you do it in a PowerPoint, you talk about it, but to visualize the amount of people that are here. And that's what we want the residents to know. There's over 300 people here waiting, ready to respond. And that's what you, we're trying to do here at the same time, remind them that they need to do their part. But I have to say thank you to Candace and Madeline. They were amazing. They did this all thing in-house, recording, videotaping, you name it, the whole thing was done in-house. And you could see the quality, how professional this is, and putting all the employees and all the resources together. So, thank you so much for doing that for us. Appreciate it.
And I really hope that the neighborhood associations eblas this to all their residents, too. That would be great.
Yeah, we should make sure NCNC gets it, too, helps it out.
That concludes my report for tonight.
Thank you, Ron. So, moving on to the consent agenda. Anybody? Okay. Can I get a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion, but I do have a couple of comments, if that's okay. A motion to approve.
Can I get a second? I'll, I'll make a second. Kat got your tongue off a sudden. Okay, Marcy, can?
I just wanted to comment on Resolution 402021. It's not often that resolutions that involve the state giving us $140,000. So, it's one to point out, especially since we're heading into budget season. And with the group health insurance, I know we had a beautiful presentation about that, but I feel it's also very, very important to state that since we've been enrolled in this group health insurance, the city has realized a savings of $16.1 million since 2008. And that's something that is very noteworthy, and I wanted to kind of bring that up. And we also had a, a little snippet of the presentation of the purchase contract for the pool. And that is an amazing project. And it's $2.4 million, but we've had multiple presentations and another snippet just a few minutes ago. But that's really exciting, and I just hope that our residents realize that this is happening right here in our city. And it's, it's, it's a blessing to have this opportunity for all of our residents to share. And that was it.
Thank you. Resolution 292021. Will the clerk please read the title? Oh, there are no public hearings on the agenda. Oh, I, all in favor of the consent agenda? We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes by four zero. Where are, there are no public hearings on the agenda, so we have resolutions. And will the clerk please read the title for Resolution 29?
Resolution 292021, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving a proposed maximum millage rate for the City of Palm Beach Gardens for fiscal year 2021, 2022, setting the date, time, and place of the first budget hearing, providing an effective date and further purposes.
I do, oh, I'm calling Alan Owens, her first half presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. For the record, Alan Owens, Finance Administrator. And I do have a brief presentation on Resolution 292021, which is the first official step in the annual budget adoption process, which sets the maximum tenant-to-millage rate for next fiscal year. Again, the purpose is twofold. As I said, sets the maximum millage rate for next year and also sets the date and time for the first public hearing. This information gets transmitted to the property praiser and then take, who takes that information and puts it on the notice of proposed taxes that they send out sometime next month. So, in summary, for 2021, 22, the proposed operating millage rate would be 5.55. Debt service would be zero. For total millage of 5.55, which is the same as the current year's rate. That proposed operating rate is 2.3% above the rollback rate, which is, calculates out to 5.4253. And as you know, these rates can be lowered at the budget hearings, but not increased, unless you go through a rather expensive process of notifying every taxpayer resident by mail. So, practically speaking, they cannot be raised at that point. In addition, we have to set the date of, and time for the first public hearing. That date, those dates cannot conflict with the county and the school board. So, so as not to conflict with the dates for the county and the school board, we're recommending the first public hearing be held on September 8 of 2021. And so, staff recommends the approval of Resolution 292021, which sets the maximum operating rate at 5.55 and sets the date for the first public hearing on September 8, 2021, at 6:00 p.m., right here in the City Council chambers. And with that, I'll take any questions you may have?
Any questions? I am, I do not have any comment cards on this, so I will close the hearing. Can I get a motion and a second to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
And I need you to announce it basically the way it is on the, on the, that you're moving approval of the resolution, setting the maximum millage and the date, please.
You want me to make the motion and read that?
Yes, ma'am.
Absolutely. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 292021, setting the maximum operating millage at 5.55 and setting the date for the first public hearing on September 8, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. in the City Council chambers. Absolutely.
And a second? Was that a yes? I'm going to give that one to Carl. I'll second that one. Carl's not talking. I'll bring it back for discussion. Anybody have any discussion?
None.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, motion passes four zero. Will the clerk please read the title for Resolution 342021?
Resolution 342021, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, updating the schedule of fees and charges for various services rendered by the City of Palm Beach Gardens for its citizens and other members of the public for fiscal year 2021, 2022, providing an effective date and further purposes.
Good evening. For the record, Sean O'Brien, Deputy Finance Administrator. This Resolution 342021 is the, the annual update to the master fees and charges schedule. Really weren't many changes. Most fees are going to stay the same. Each year, we, we review it. Any adjustments or additions are added to it. Each individual department reviewed their specific fees and made any necessary changes or revisions. Includes recommended changes from departments to ensure that the fees charged are sufficient enough to cover or offset the cost of services. If I could go over just a couple of examples of minor increases in the Fire Department. The inspection and plan review, the fee remained the same, but the increased fee increased from $50 to $75. The alarm registration increased from $35 to $50. Emergency safety plan review increased from $50 to $75. And under Parks and Recreation, after the construction of the new pool, the entrance fee will increase to $4.25 from $3.50, but the lap swing fee will remain the same at $3.50. And there's also one new fee for addition of a new city facility, the large park at District Park. That fee will be $500 for a rental for resident, $650 for a non-resident. And in summary, the proposed changes would go into effect October 1, 2021. And copies of the master fee are available at City's clerks, or it's going to be posted to our website. And finally, staff recommends approval of Resolution 342021.
Thank you, Sean. I do not have any comment cards on this, so I'm going to close the hearing. Can I get a motion and a second to approve?
Are you looking to need to make a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
I'm going to bring it back for discussion. Does anyone have any discussion or questions on this?
What are the, what are those costs compared to other municipalities and to the county? Where do we hold up there?
It's really different. I mean, it's everything from building department to engineering. A lot of our recreation similar, or the, the fees are based on specific programs. We do do a, a good job of looking at the cost, trying to recover really what the cost of the program is, instead of just looking to see what other municipalities charge.
And then, we did our last questionnaire to all the residents. They were in favor of paying for specific, for things separately necessarily, not all across the board. Okay. So, we're falling in line with what the residents are wishing for.
Any other questions?
Just to, just to elaborate on that a little bit, having worked in multiple municipalities, everybody does things different. Like, we include in our permit fees, we include certain reviews, and then others have extra, extra, extra. So, it, it's all very, very, it's very, it's, yeah, it's very different. But with that said, one of the things that I wanted to bring up after reading all of these fees and all of these, everything that, that we have, that we provide, all the services that we provide to our community, is, one thing I realized is mosquito spraying, which, you know, there's Mosquito Joe commercials and everything, but our community, Palm Beach Gardens in general, really appreciates the mosquito spraying. But our residential communities, the HOAs, can actually call our city and ask for additional spraying within their private HOA. And there's a fee associated with it in this fee chart where they can pay, anyone can pay the same fee to have their community sprayed upon request, in addition to what our city already does as far as spraying. So, that's something that I didn't, you know, realize at first until I inquired about it. And it, it's just another unique opportunity for our residents and HOAs that I don't know if they're aware of, but it's important to point out. Yeah, like Mira Sol, who's out west, that, you know, you get, when you, when you play golf, you get evergreen. Go outside in the backyard, you get eaten alive. I'm surprised I don't fly away by the mosquito, so.
It's also important to note that in a pandemic year, that we don't have to increase our fees to, to be able to make our budget, that we can hold everything stable and that new technologies and new facilities can affect the fees, but it's not to, to make money.
Absolutely.
Okay. No further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes four zero. Okay, so that's where this one ends. So, where am I now? I'm here. Thanks. Okay. Okay. Are there any items for council action discussion or any board reports, committee reports that anybody wants to give?
Negative, negative, negative.
I'll be quick.
You want to go first?
You're always quick. It'll be ten o'clock soon.
Oh, my goodness. So, just at the TPA today, we had a couple of really important things that took place. We approved the list of priority projects. And on that, the BT PAC, which is one of the subgroups that works with the TPA-ranked corridor, that's going to be resurfaced on Prosperity Farms Road from Northlake to Donald Ross. It's a county road. However, I didn't pull it, but I did ask for them to take a look with the TPA and engineering, because they're putting in a bike lane, but it's not separated. It's small and it's kind of just a repaving. So, I left it on their list of priority projects, but did ask for the TPA to do a proper review. Since we're doing so much with mobility and getting people out of cars and getting them on bikes and walking, I thought, let's, even though it's not a city road, let's have some continuity. And hopefully, the county will take a look at it.
Does that connect with any of our bike lanes that?
It will. It will. Yeah. So, it's, it's going to go through. I'll keep an eye on it. And then, also, there was Senate Bill, Senate Bill 950, which is a bicycle and pedestrian safety bill. They did a great presentation on it, so I'm going to share that with the NCNC and, and you guys as well. And I'll put it wherever I can, but it, it might change some of how people get around on bikes and cars together. So, there are some interesting new laws that started July 1.
From the legislature?
Yeah, from the legislature. So, I'll be sure to share that with our city manager, so he can get that up, too.
Marcy, anything?
Yes, please. And I'll be quick, too. Carl. I want to, can I give a brief update on the TPA meeting that I actually attended last month on behalf of Chelsea? They did an update on quiet zones. And as you know, quiet zones is in effect from West Palm South. From 15th Street in West Palm North, safety measures have all been identified. As we probably already know, construction is currently underway for all the, all of the safety measures needed. There's, after that, thorough testing will follow to obviously test the safety measures. And that is once the construction is completed. And funding is in place for quiet zones in Phase Two. And in September, October, Bright Line's going to be doing a presentation to TPA that will include an updated schedule for, for the Phase Two project. And Chelsea and I can update us and everyone, all of our constituents, who's very, very concerned about quiet zones. And it's been a question that's been occurring for the last 10 years. Also, TPA is working on a draft of their mobility project, including transit corridors. They discussed that last month. And I believe that this council, obviously, is unanimously in favor of promoting transit stops, especially since it will be super beneficial when FPNL opens shortly after they finish their construction. And I want to encourage staff, and I know I don't really have to because they're already in support of it, but sharing my support in working with TPA to help advance that station on PGA. And I also wanted to thank, this is totally a different subject, but I also wanted to thank our city staff and Scott Danyelski and his team for writing that letter of communication in regards to the buildings, the inspection in lieu of, or in, because of the sunrise and Champlain Tower, that really was a tragic event, as our city manager stated. And, you know, we are a younger city and than many other cities, but yet, it is something that this tragedy has really had everyone look at. So, I appreciate you guys being forward-thinking and doing something in regards to that and hoping to create some policy going forward. Thank you.
Do we, are we finished with the Bright Line track changes, or do we still have more to go?
In the city?
In the city. Are we?
We are completely done within our city. Northlake Boulevard was the last one to be done.
Okay. So, does that mean we can apply for our zones now?
It, we have to come, apply as an entire entity. So, it has to go to West Palm, all the way to Jupiter. So, they all have to be in place, and we all have to put the calculator together and go and place in the MPO. The TPA is going to work with us through that process. I know they're bouncing around a little bit, but how many do they have left from West Palm to Jupiter? I, I know they still have one in Lake, they will have one in Lake Park to do, but I, and I don't know about Dequesta area. Not through Dequesta, just to Ju, just to the north into Jupiter? It's going to be all the way to Dequesta where the quiet zone goes through.
To the county line.
To the county line road? Yes.
That includes the drawbridge? That includes the drawbridge at Riverside?
Yes, but there's no safety measures there on that bridge. It's every crossing, it's pedestrian, vehicle pedestrian, safety measures that have to be put in place. And again, we have to do it as an entity. We can't do it on a single crossing nor as a jurisdiction. It has to be all together. But the TPA does have the funding to apply for that. And once they're in place and once they're tested, we'll apply to the rail for that.
Thanks, Tom.
If you guys haven't seen it, but the intercoastal bridge, or whatever they're going to do it, that thing is in full construction and has been a while.
Yeah.
So I wonder how, yeah, if I could take another year, you know?
Again, that doesn't have to be in place. It's every crossing where a pedestrian or and a vehicle crosses.
Okay. Great, thank you.